Welcome to the September 28, 2023 Planning Board Public Hearing. I will do the roll call in the absence of the Chair. Vice Chair, Finity.
Present.
Secretary Burke is absent. Craig Cattell-Lenato.
Present.
George Mutu is absent. Tom Neely.
Present.
Kate Fulham.
Present.
Chair is here. We have a quorum. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. So we are going to start with Jeffrey Delandro. Do we have?
We do, Madam Chair.
We have notice? And who's reading it?
I'm taking this one.
You do.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held at Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan application entitled Jeffrey Delandro. The site plan special exemption application is for the construction of a 10,000-square-foot building for five special trade units on a 1.6-acre parcel located in the L4 zoning district, Aquifer Protection Overlay District, and Central Pine Barrens compatible growth area. The application includes a request to modify the existing covenants of 25% clearing on a site to permit clearing of up to 50% as required under the Aquifer Protection Overlay District pursuant to Section 330-69.3. The property is located at 1323 Spionk Riverhead Road, Hamlet of Spionk, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-326-1-8.2.
Thank you. Wayne?
Good evening, Board members. Wayne Bruin, Shea Marsh Sensigun-Bruin in Southampton, on behalf of the applicant Jeffrey Delandro. As noted in the reading of the notice, this property is located on the west of the side of Spionk Riverhead Road, about 3,900 feet north of Old Country Road in the hamlet of Spionk. It is in the light industrial 40 zoning district. The parcel size is 70,949 square feet. It was shown as a lot and a minor subdivision map approved by the Planning Board in 1988, known as farmland estates. At the time, the Planning Board approved that. The Aquifer Protection Overlay District requirements required the Planning Board to impose covenants. As you know, in 1989, the code was amended and set forth the schedule as we're now familiar with in the code. So there were restrictions here for 25% clearing on each lot. Now, the Aquifer Protection Overlay District allows 50% because it's industrial. Just in passing, the Pine Barrens land use plan in the compatible growth area would allow 65%. So we're more than consistent, we're more restrictive even with the 50%. So tonight, we're asking you to amend that covenant, but more importantly, we're asking for site plan approval with a plan that pretty much mirrors the property, the development that took place. It's a 40-by-250-foot building, industrial building. The plan is to have five spaces for special trade contractors. We've submitted a special exception petition indicating how that complies. I believe this plan was reviewed at the pre-application, met all your standards. We have preliminary engineering comments, which I think can all be addressed. I'm trying to do this quick. I know you've been here all day. So if you have any questions about the application, I'll be happy to provide that. We are on the Architectural Review Board's agenda for Tuesday so they can give you their comments on the plan. But I think preliminarily, this was a standard building that you see in the industrial district. The Planning Board did require a 50-foot buffer along the street, so all that natural vegetation will remain similarly on the back of the property.
And this is affected by the Spionk plume?
The Spionk plume, believe it or not, the railroad tie company that was there was actually opposite the street, and the plume goes to the south. So we haven't encountered any issues with the Health Department. There's no full basements here or anything like that, and there is public water, so.
They ran a new water mean, I think it was like three years ago, for that purpose, because all of those buildings were initially on wells. Now they're all tapping into.
Yeah, everybody on Spionk Riverhead Road, as Craig has indicated.
Good. Great. That's good safety. Any questions from the Board? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this application? Anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom? Okay. So this is site plan, special exception. I'll entertain a motion to close with a 10-day comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor. Proposed extensions, five in favor, two absent. Okay. Thank you, Wayne. Next on the agenda is 625 Butter Lane. Do we have notice, or is this continuing?
We do, Madam Chair.
We have notice. Tom?
Sure. Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the covenant amendment entitled World Peace 625 Butter Lane. The application is a request to amend the location of the envelope for agricultural structures associated with a farm on a 9.05-acre agricultural reserve parcel created with the subdivision map of World Peace located in the CR80 zoning district, east of Butter Lane at 625 Butter Lane, Hamlet of Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-51-1-17.7.
Thank you.
Good evening. How's everybody? My name is John Bennett. I'm over there at Bennett &amp; Reed in Southampton. And with me this evening is Adam Shapiro, and Adam is the principal, one of the principals of the LLC applicant. The affidavit of mailing and posting was already submitted today. So we're here for a request to change the location where agricultural structures are allowed within this agricultural reserve. Primarily, it's for animal housing. The property is located, I guess it's about one-third of the way south down on Butter Lane, a little bit past of, I always call it the Hampton Day School. I guess it's the Raw School extension now, on the east side of the road. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. The whole idea is to change the area where agricultural structures can be allowed to what is shown here, to what is shown here. And why is, why are we asking to do that? Well, we're asking to do that so that we can have animal housing in an area that meets the 200-foot setback requirement. When the limits for agricultural structures were imposed some times ago on the World Peace subdivision, I think, if I remember correctly, the World Peace subdivision was the McNamara Farm. Half of it got sold to the Hampton Day School for expansion, and then the other half got sold to, I think, I think there was some, I think Al Tuff was involved somehow in the development of the subdivision. But in any event, at that time, the zoning setback for housing, as it were, animals or animal structures was 100 feet. So it did no violence to a typical farm facility where you can have animals to have the limit of the structures within here, but the zoning code was amended. So thus the need for doing this. We were before the Zoning Board of Appeals, spoke during March 23rd, and then we wanted to go back to the Ag Advisory Committee to see what they said, and it's a bit of a mixed bag. I'll talk about it in a while. But we've previously been before the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow some relief for these structures to be, so that they could be submitted with certain setbacks that would have stayed within the existing area of the allowed agricultural structures. We wouldn't have met the setbacks because we can't because they're in this area. So we wanted, instead of changing the area for the structures, we wanted to ask the Zoning Board of Appeals to give us zoning relief. And it was interesting what happened at that hearing. And I gave this, gave these letters to the zoning, to you folks some time ago. A lawyer formally representing one of the current objectants, Tim McCully, as well as a law firm currently representing one of the objectants, suggested, including Mr. McCully had a sketch, that we do exactly what we're doing here. Why do you need to grant a variance when you can? They should go to the Planning Board first. They should have gone to the Planning Board, quite sternly, should have gone to the Planning Board and asked to move the area of agricultural structures. So what we did, we did that. That's why we're here now. We're here for two reasons. We think we have a good reason for the application to you because of the history of the property and the history of the code and how the code changed. But also, one of the things that we have to do under New York State town law, when we're asking for a Zoning Board of Appeals to grant relief, we have to show that we've first taken some other avenue, attempted some other avenue, and your counsel will tell you this, this is in the law, some other avenue to get the benefit without asking for the variance. So that's what we're here for. Quite candidly, if the Board is not inclined to do this, we're just on our way back, not just, we're on our way back, we really think you should do this, but we're on our way back to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we will check off one of the boxes of what we were supposed to have done. But I don't want to, I don't want to view it that way in total. I think we've made a good application here, and I would, hopefully, you would, you would help us on that. One of the things that we created in response to some additional comments from the Ag Advisory Committee, they were concerned about loss of agricultural soils. So we submitted as part of this application an analysis which showed that the existing area in which the Ag structures can be constructed contains 17,989 square feet of Class 1 soils, while the proposed limits contain 16,941, about 1,000 feet less. Not a huge amount, but a net lower amount in terms of impact on Class 1 prime agricultural soils. It also allows us to shift, to sort of, you know, to shift the area for structures so that there's, they're more, how do I say this? They're more, it's a more fairness in terms of what houses are being impacted by it. So it shifts it away. One of the strong opponents was Ms. Green, who has the property here. This actually shifts the, all of the structures somewhat further away. I want to tell you that this greenhouse, the bathroom, the storage, and the storage here, they're not, they would be allowed under, in this area, under either scenario because they don't have that 200-foot setback. A greenhouse doesn't have a 200-foot setback. There was some mention, somebody being concerned about there being heat in the greenhouse. Well, there is heat necessary in these greenhouses, number one, and number two, heat is not prohibited in an agricultural, I'm sorry, in an accessory building in the town code. So I think that was an attempt to suggest that something is going to happen here that is not legal to happen here. That's the old Ira Renner argument. Oh, this is going to become something that's not legal. And the appellate division very sternly said, you can't anticipate any sort of violations. And that's a lot of what you're hearing here, anticipation of violations, when that's just, there's no demonstration nor that that will happen, nor can you take that into After the public hearing was held on the 23rd, we went back to the Ag Reserve, the Ag Advisory Committee, and it's interesting what they said. It's a little bit of a mixed bag. They didn't agree with moving the area, but they noted that the request for the run-in sheds for the alpacas be allowed to remain where they are, as it seems perfectly fine, given the current use of the property. So what you have there is some farmers telling you that we don't even think these things are structures. Now, I wish that was the case, but the town code defines structures very broadly, anything constructed on or above, on or just on or below the ground, although everybody has understood that doesn't apply to septic systems. But I think the reason I bring it to your attention is that from a programmatic point of view, from a policy point of view, even though they weren't in favor of this change, they did say, again, that the request for the run-in sheds for the alpacas be allowed to remain, which seem, where they are perfectly fine, given the current use of the property. The Ag Committee does not seem to classify the sheds as structures, but that's nice of them, and it's nice, I think it shows you from a policy point where they think about these things. However, I have to deal with it because candidly, they are, they are, they are structures. With that said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Shapiro, who'd like to make a brief statement to the Board. And before you open it up to the public, I would just want to come up and make a few more comments. And if I could ask Mr. Shapiro.
John, if you could just trace out the two lines that we're seeing on the map.
This is the current one, it's right here, and this is the proposed.
Okay.
So it shifts it, I mean, this is, Ms. Green has been one of the very vocal opponents. It shifts it away from her lot.
Here's the subdivision map up here, if the Board wants to see. But you can sort of see in the corners lightly, right? This drawing, the map shows where, right?
And they pushed it in the corner. Al Tuff told me that when this subdivision was being designed, Mr. Commonwealth wanted to buy the lot that now Ms. Green owns, and he was doing that for, because, so that the Ag Reserve, Ag area would just be on top of that lot. I don't think there was any other rhyme or reason given to it, and we think this is a superior location that, you know, again, spreads some of the impact, to the extent that there is any impact, you know, a little bit more throughout the neighborhood. But I'll ask Adam to have a, say a few words. Also, I also wanted everyone to meet him and sort of give a second. Good. Thank you, Adam.
Evening. So this will be very brief statements, only two pages. Would welcome questions after.
Just give us your name.
My name is Adam Shapiro. I'm the owner of the Residential and Agricultural Properties at 625 Butter Lane in Bridgehampton. I appreciate your time. As you know, our agricultural property has a defined location for any agricultural structures that we build. We're here tonight to ask you to move this area towards the center of our property and away from neighbors. The neighbors have asked for this. The Zoning Board of Appeals asked us to request this review, and we've come to agree that the move is in the best interests of everyone involved, so we do hope you will approve the change. I made a fairly lengthy statement this summer to the Agricultural Review Board about what we're doing on the property and our plans for the future. I think there was a lot of confusion prior to that meeting, and my understanding is that the statement did help clear things up. I won't repeat the entire statement again. I'm going to keep this brief, but I'll give you the highlights of the history and our plans. My wife and I purchased the 12-acre property in 2015. We were excited by the opportunity to restore the tree farm, which included an inventory of approximately 400 specimen trees. The farm had been an incorporated and registered tree nursery, but it had suffered from six years of lack of care dating back to the Great Financial Crisis, essentially from 2009 to 2015. The irrigation system in the tree farm was not operational. Trees had not been spaced properly. Many trees had unaddressed root issues. In the first year of our ownership, approximately 30 valuable and mature beech trees died due to the prior lack of care. The borders were overrun with invasive vines, weeds, and Russian olive trees. We hired an experienced local arborist full-time to help turn things around. He has worked with us for the past six years, and in that time, we restored the irrigation system, we moved approximately 100 trees to improve spacing, we implemented regular pruning and addressed organically blights that have attacked apple, pear, birch, and most recently the beech trees. So the beech trees remain under severe stress. We cleared, we have now cleared all of our borders of invasive plants and replanted the borders with a combination of desirable native trees and ornamental specimen trees. Today, we have increased the number of trees on the property from 400 to over 1,000, and we've begun tree sales. We have over $10,000 in tree sales this year. We have added animals to the farm as an accessory to the tree farm operation. Specifically, we have alpacas and chickens. We have four alpacas and currently about 12 chickens. These serve several purposes. The alpacas provide manure that we use on the property, and they help control vegetation, and they do that with minimal disturbance. They make no noise, and the manure is odorless. The alpacas provide wool that we use for personal use, including this year, we produced four very high-quality blankets, and we have, we had a better harvest this year of wool and expect to do more this year. The chickens provide eggs for personal use, and both the alpacas and the chickens add to the interest of the farm, which helps get our children focused on what we're doing there. Regarding the future, our main goal is to grow, store, and sell valuable trees from seed and purchase seedlings. The trees we have in mind are desirable trees that are difficult to source in our area, which we have experience with now. Most of them we've, we own, we've tried to source, but we only own in small quantities today. Many of them require care and nurture through the early years, some need to be stored indoors during the winter, some in the early stages of their lives, and some indefinitely. Some of the trees are very slow-growing and require patience, and I'll just give a few examples of the trees we have in mind to cultivate, include cedar of Lebanon, ash magnolia, variety of citrus trees, aracharia auricana, also known as monkey puzzle trees, and several other conifers. As you've seen on our plan, we intend to erect structures that are extremely well-distanced and shielded from the neighbors. The greenhouse structure is critical to the cultivation, hardening, and storage of the trees we have in mind. The other structures exist to provide storage and shelter for the animals. We first proposed this project almost six years ago, and we are more committed to it than ever. We hope you will approve the move in the location of the structures as a compromise that will allow us to move our project forward with a minimum of disturbance.
Thank you.
Okay. I would love to take questions.
Okay. Just a few comments. I wanted to state in anticipation of the presentations to be made this evening by the Opposition, I will note that they have repeatedly stated the applicant is required for site plan review for the proposed agricultural structures. That's simply false. I can't file a complete site plan, a legal site plan application until either the Zoning Board of Appeals grants the relief or this Board moves the covenant. I certainly don't intend to go through a site plan process as a chicken before the egg, to use maybe an appropriate metaphor, thing that the objectants are asking for, site plan. You'll have a crack at site plan approval because, for structures. I mean, it's gotten to the point now where, in conversations with the town, it used to be that there used to be a permit, Ag Reserve or Ag permit, Bill Flanagan used to do it, but now all of that has fallen to you. So you'll get, you'll get a crack at looking at the spacing, the drainage, all of that stuff on a site plan review. It's literally absurd to make that request when we don't know whether or not the structures housing the animals can stay in that area, can be in that area. You either have to get a variance or some help from you. So that's simply incorrect. And again, the proposed greenhouse, which is sited in a conforming location either way. And again, so this relief, request for relief to shift the limits, to shift the limits for agricultural buildings is to a more central location off the property lines and further away from the neighbors to the north and the west. And I, you know, again, this is, this is primarily, at this point, I think, an opportunity for us to present. I think we've demonstrated how there's no harm or foul to the purposes for agricultural reserves, including preservation of prime agricultural soils. And I think, again, the history of how this got created in this area, based upon my conversations with Mr. Tuff, who was a former client of mine, I wasn't involved in this, but said to me, Mr. Commonwealth was going to buy this lot, so they put, they stuck the Ag Reserve here. And again, I want to remind you that the Ag Reserve, the structural limitations here. And again, I want to remind you that the setbacks for agricultural structures that contain animals was more, was less restrictive by about 100 feet in those days. So that didn't come into anyone's thinking. But in any event, there we are.
A quick question.
Sure.
So you want to move the greenhouse over to the center, and what about the llama shed and the chicken coop?
Well, they would be generally where they are, but I have to, they would, they don't meet the 200-foot setback. That's why I have to shift them over here. They would shift, we would shift them into a new limit of agricultural structures where they would meet the setback, so I wouldn't have to go to, they'd meet the 200-foot setback. Sort of strange thing about this is that I would think that the neighbors would welcome it, because what I'm attempting to do is to keep these structures that house animals 200 feet away and further away generally from people. If I go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I think my case really gets stronger. I've tried to do, take some alternate method, and I'm going to ask them for that sort of relief. So it's a strange, it's a strange thing. It's a strange thing, the Opposition.
Yeah, you have to come up to the.
Very significant benefit of having animal housing here in the center, and having this shift that allows for the animal housing to be in the center, is that there's a very dense tree canopy right here. So it's incredibly protective of the alpacas. So, you know, when it's about 90 degrees over here, it's about 70 degrees over here. And so it's also a logical place to include the housing. And the housing itself is, as you guys know, is very small. It's a two-by-four in canvas structure that sits underneath this tree canopy and is shielded by the tree canopy.
I did a site visit with one of the Planning Board members, Tom. We spent a couple of hours on the property, so we have a visual sense.
Are any of the structures existing now?
Yes.
They are?
I think that there is a strong argument based upon some opinion letters that structures of this nature under the right to farm law are not regulated, but I'd rather not have that argument with the town.
Two-by-fours in canvas with no foundation.
I think there's, I mean, there's an opinion letter coming out of the state that says you can build some fairly large agricultural structures without even building permits because, under the right to farm law. I know the town attorney's office doesn't agree with that, so this is the better course to try to do it in a way. But I mean, candidly, I told Mr. Shapiro under the benefit of that opinion, I don't think there was any harm or foul for him to put those structures there.
But you've had building permits for the structure?
No. We would if we get the, if we go to get the variances or this Board acts, we'll go through it.
I hate to interrupt, but the mic's not picking up anything. People online can hear.
John, if you could use the.
We would if either one of the Board gives us the relief, but barring that, I'm going to stick to my position that, I would stick to my position that under some opinion letters and the right to farm law, they're not necessary. So, and I made that very clear, that this is without prejudice to my argument that no building permits are necessary. Having said that, I'd rather not have that argument, I'd rather come and do it this way, or at least see if we can do it this way.
Great. Thank you.
Can I just ask a couple?
Yeah.
When we took our tour, and I think it was your horticulturalist or arborist gave us the, very helpful gentleman, but I showed him the Interscience map that you had given us at a previous meeting, which corresponds to that. He wasn't sure what these buildings were. Can you go back over what these buildings are going to be?
Oh, the future plans?
I guess these were future plans. Maybe he didn't, wasn't familiar with it or whatever, but.
He'd be generally familiar, but he wouldn't know specifics. But if you're talking about this side, the greenhouse, three storage, three storage buildings and a bathroom, and then over here, animal housing for alpacas, chickens, and a possible third structure.
Okay. And you consider this a tree farm? Is that?
Yes, it is a tree farm. With sales.
It is. I mean. I mean, you drove there.
Well, again, I asked him what kind of a farm it was, and, you know, he wasn't quite sure.
Brendan, was he?
He, he didn't come right out. I said, well, that's very simple, very simple...
There was a miscommunication.
Question, maybe there was some...
He's very sure. He was very upset at some statements that said it wasn't a farm.
I asked what kind of farm.
He's a certified arborist, certified agronomist with, you know, well over twenty years of experience, worked for Whitmore's, he's local, he's assistant fire chief, he's highly trained professional.
No, he seemed very helpful.
And so much so that the ag review board noted, he was way out ahead of Beech Leaf Blight, further out ahead than, than the Cornell Cooperative. So Cornell Cooperative didn't come out with a protocol for Beech Leaf Blight, and Brendan came up with one at least a year before, and that, that protocol actually ended up being adopted by Cornell Cooperative.
If he's available to go on Zoom, it would be helpful if we heard from him directly tonight.
Okay, fine. He came to the ag review board. So I thought this would be less technical, and ag review board would be more technical, and I'd be happy to have him anytime. I don't think I can produce him right now. I'd be happy to try.
The written comment period will be open for a while?
He submitted an affidavit, talking about the care that he's taken and the work. I mean, it's, it's an addendum to my affidavit. I, I encourage you to read it, because it's very detailed about care for the alpacas, care for the trees, and his credentials.
Great.
But I could try, I could step out and try right now if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, we probably are going to hear from a lot of people, so it's useful if the people that are here are speaking for themselves, and, you know, it's not as helpful if we heard that Tom said he said, and then you said he said. It's not really as useful for us. So I think if he's available to speak...
Okay, I'll try to get him. I really do encourage you to read his affidavit.
Well, test, well, test, you know, we were there, we did see, and spoke with him, and he's extremely informed arborist. Yeah. So I, let me, we have some other people who want to speak, and so Dennis Saskin? Dennis, do you want to? You're just observing. Martha Riker, please, from Tumiletham Shea.
I'll let Mr. Ragman go first, if that's right.
Then I would rather call Jennifer Hartnager. Jen, do you want to come speak? Or do you...
I'm happy to go first.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Martha Riker, Tumiletham Shea, Kelly Duban in Cordero, thirty-three West Second Street, Riverhead, New York. I represent Michelle Green, the owner of Six Thirty-Nine Butter Lane, and I've also been asked to speak on behalf of Georgia Nellie Singh, the owners of Five Cody Way, who are also adjacent owners to the agricultural reserve. You know, I think that, I want to bring it back to what the application is before this board, which is a covenant amendment, right? And covenant amendments are not really spelled out in the town code. They are generally taken to, when this board does it, it's to amend a written declaration of covenants and restrictions, generally pursuant to some form of approval that was granted by this board. We're not being asked to amend a declaration of covenants and restrictions here. You're being asked to change lines on a filed map. And those, and that's a filed map that people bought in reliance of, especially Georgia Nellie Singh, who bought believing that that envelope for the agricultural structures would remain where it is. Same thing for my client, Michelle Green. She also believed that anything that was built in that envelope would be subject to compliance with the agricultural easement that is held by the town, and also compliance with the procedures and dimensional regulations set forth in the code. And so I'd like to take this moment to correct a couple of things that were said by Mr. Bennett. One is when the agricultural, I'm sorry, the animal husbandry regulations were changed in two thousand and eleven, that was local law twenty-five of two thousand and eleven. The animal husbandry setbacks are as they are today. The only thing that changed was the minimum amount of acreage. It was made to be ten acres. The legislative intent on that was to make it match the minimum ten acres that are required for horse farms, and also noted that in order to be considered for inclusion in an agricultural district pursuant to the state Ags and Markets Law, a minimum of ten acres is required. So there was a very clear legislative intent in two thousand and eleven. It was not that the setbacks were less than they are today. The only change was to the minimum size required for animal husbandry. And I want to go back and again, so, you know, I have written to this board in my submissions in March that I believe this is a map amendment and not a covenant interpretation. You were being asked to change lines on a filed map, and if a new map isn't recorded, then how, how is a subsequent purchaser to rely on that map, right? I mean, you do the same thing when a lot line modification is requested, you file a new map so that people are on record, right? Or you abandon a portion of the subdivision if you're allowed to pursuant to real property law three thirty-five. There are procedures for this. It's not just merely a covenant amendment. So I think procedurally, the law does not support what the applicant is asking for. But I want to address something else that Mr. Bennett said, which was that he had to go to the zoning board first. That is patently false. Town code section three thirty fifty D subsection two governs construction permits, right? When you have an agricultural reserve created pursuant to the subdivision process. It has two requirements. When a construction permit is sought, which we already know the applicant has admitted he never sought for the animal husbandry structures, a site plan is to be submitted to the planning board, and the procedures and minimum requirements contained in three thirty-one eighty-three and three thirty-one eighty-four are to be followed, right? And I just want to let you know what three thirty eighty-four subsection J says. "In the place of a site plan application requiring a zoning variance, the site shall be subject to a preliminary review by the planning board, development plan prior to action on said application by the Board of Appeals. Building permits issued pursuant to a variance shall be in accordance with the conditions established by the Board of Appeals." So in my reading of the very plain language of this code, if you have an ag reserve and you want to build structures on it, you have to get a construction permit. And when you do that, you have to submit a site plan, and it has to go through the site plan procedures and the minimum requirements of a site plan that are set forth in the code. And if it needs variances, which it does, then you, this board reviews it first prior to the ZBA taking any action. And moreover, I would like to go back to section three thirty fifty D two and the second sentence, which says, "Where applicable, the planning board shall combine an application for a construction permit with an application for special exception permission pursuant to article seventeen of this chapter. Animal husbandry is a special exception use. An agricultural greenhouse is a special exception use." And at the end of this day, even though this is just an application for a covenant amendment, quote unquote, it's because the applicant seeks to conduct special exception uses on a lot where no site plan and no special exception permit applications have been made. That is a fundamental flaw and a giant departure from the process that is laid out. And it's not confusing. It's a very clear roadmap. And I understand why the applicant wants to turn the process upside down, and I understand why the applicant wants to evade any sort of comprehensive environmental review, not just under SECA, but also under chapter one fifty-seven of the town code, right? Because the Aqua for Protection Overlay District is an area of critical environmental concern and has been designated as such. But I don't understand why the town is unwilling to hold the applicant accountable to the very same procedures that are so clearly laid out in the code and that it has held other farmers applicable to. And in this case, the variances that are required to conduct animal husbandry are unprecedented, right? This lot is undersized. A minimum lot size of ten acres is required. This lot is nine acres, and that's before you deduct the flag actress strip that's towards the south. So when I come before this board, I want to say first and foremost that the zoning process, the planning process are only fair if you follow the rules. And procedure is the easiest one to follow, because it makes it fair for everyone to participate, and it makes it fair, and it gives you standards and criteria, minimum standards and criteria by which you evaluate the application. So on behalf of my client, Dr. Michelle Green, and also on behalf of Georgia Nellie Singh, and, you know, many of the other neighbors who have voiced their concerns about this, we're asking this applicant to come in with a comprehensive site plan application and a special permit application, the way the code says it has to be done, right? And this covenant amendment is just one way of segmenting the entire process, because you can't amend this covenant without discussing what the applicant wants to do and why they want to do it. And I find that if you look at the subdivision history of this subdivision, and you look at it contextually with all of the other agricultural open space subdivisions on the Bridgehampton Lanes, this is the only one I have ever found that has an ag structure envelope. The planning board had a reason for it. It was a condition of the final approval. And unfortunately, I don't have a verbatim transcript of the planning board from nineteen ninety-six, but the minutes note that at that final meeting for the conditional approval, what was discussed was this agricultural structures envelope. It was a concern for the planning board in nineteen ninety-six. They put it there for a reason, and especially on such a smaller and undersized parcel, right? I mean, if you look at the ag overlay districts intention, right, it's always to sort of create larger ag reserves, ten acres or more. This one's undersized. That's, I guess, the best they could do when approving it. But this, this applicant is asking you to change a filed subdivision map, right? And the envelopes that were imposed upon it. And I don't think they've explained why this board should depart from what it agreed to in nineteen ninety-six and what it required the applicant to do. So I think I'll leave it at that. I know there are a lot of other people who would like to talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me before I leave?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, chair. I'm Jeff Ragman, and I represent two additional neighbors, Meredith Berkowitz at one Cody Way and Nico Elmaleh, who lives at nine Cody Way. They're both neighbors to the north, and I want to engage in some of the discussion that Martha raised, that, about the procedures that are created by the, by a subdivision that creates an easement twenty-six years ago. And I think it's important to note that all the purchasers of the lots in the area relied on that easement that was recorded in the county, in Suffolk County. And contrary to what you've heard, and we've heard at other board meetings from the applicant's attorney, that, oh, these people, you know, they buy next to agriculture, and then they don't want to live next to agriculture. I can assure you that my clients saw the agricultural easement as an inducement and not a detriment to the property. They moved because they want it to be near agriculture. At the same time, they expect and believe in compliance with the law, and there is pretty clear law that governs what planning boards should do in terms of evaluating agricultural structures on easements that are taken from subdivisions. And the applicant now wants to change the easement to accommodate structures that are already on the property without permits. He's had a long history of noncompliance with the zoning code, and none of them are depicted on any diagrams that he's ever given to any of the boards. So he's never come in and, and showed where he's put illegal structures. We've had complaints about other illegal activities on the site that I can, I can allude to later, but the, but what this application is really about is not moving the pieces around because you're not there yet. What the application is about is the applicant's continuous failure to submit a required site plan. It's very simple. It's, it's required, and it's, a site plan is an essential document for all the boards to review, and it's a way of unifying the review, which in this case has been shattered apart. And we're in a situation where the zoning board doesn't know what you're doing, you, you haven't heard what the zoning board's doing, the ag committee got called in late, and is, and none of the boards that have looked at this application have seen a site plan. And in fact, the ZBA members were incredulous, as, as, as Mr. Bennett made his presentation and went on, when he admitted that he had not placed on a plan the, the structures that were already in place illegally on the property. They said, you mean, you want us to review a property where you've put stuff down and you're not showing it? And he said, yeah, I'm showing you what, what I want it to be, where I want it to be. Same thing he's doing tonight. And they were uneasy about that. And the reason that we're here is because I stood up and the other neighbors stood up and said, hey, there is a process here. There's, it's a very clearly defined process of how you handle this kind of an application, and you don't go to the ZBA first for any reason other than to try to muscle the planning board, which he's frankly discussing with you tonight, like, oh, we want to do this because we intend to go back to the Z, we're hoping, at worst case, we'll go back to the ZBA, and we'll get what we want because, because the envelope won't be moved. The planner who's with us today, Anthony Treza, was aware of it, and he said at the end of the meeting, that got us here, based on my discussion of procedure, that it was coming to you for site plan review. And if there's any question about that, I can give you a handout that has a link, and you can hear Anthony saying correctly that the referral to your board is for site plan review, not for covenant review. And it's, it's significant. It's significant because there's an orderly way to plan, and there's chaos. And if you look at the results of each, it's pretty easy to see who benefits from each. The town benefits from orderly, consistent planning that's based on shared documents that are transparent, where all the facts are on the table. That hasn't happened. Even after we came here for a site plan review based on Anthony Treza's referral, Mr. Bennett walked in without a site plan, and he's, he's, seems determined not to give you a site plan, and he doesn't want to talk about the fact that he's installed illegal, that his client has installed unlawful structures. He wants to engage in, you know, nitpicking over whether the sheds are structures or not, but he admits they really are. So we, and it's continued, because, because nobody's taken the reins and put this thing where it belongs, on the right, on the right track. So when you made a formal referral to the Agricultural Advisory Board, we knew about it, we attended that meeting, and the ag board allowed us to speak, and the result was a scorching evaluation of, of, of this application. Their comments were absolutely scorching. They basically said, it's, it's, we don't know, we'd rather not talk about what's wrong with this application, because we don't see anything that's right with the application. And they were absolutely opposed to moving that envelope, the building envelope. That was the first document you got from them. Somehow, to continue sort of playing one board against another, nobody has all the facts, Mr. Bennett then submitted a letter to the planning board saying, oh, I want to go back to the, to the ag board. We had a, we had a FOIL request in covering the time period when he sent those letters. We never got copies of those letters. So he politely went back to the board, to the ag board, without any opposition. We knew nothing about it. This is what happens when you don't follow the, the procedures that are mandated in the, in the town code. This is what happens. Boards get played. And so they, they stuck to their original conclusion, and they, but they said, we're not so sure that the, they didn't say that the, the animal shelters weren't structures. They just said, we think they're temporary structures and they look okay. But that's without, that's, that's on an incomplete record with no site plan, and we weren't present. So I would take that with a, with a grain of salt. You know, and I want to say that Mr. Bennett is saying, oh, well, you know, when we bought the property, the, the setbacks were different, and so that's his way of saying, he, it wasn't, it was, it was not his fault that he didn't examine his title report. What he told you is not true, and what, what Martha Riker told you is, is correct, that what, what the town changed in the animal husbandry law was not the setbacks that he referred to. It was the lot area. They increased the lot area. And just like our neighbors saw this title, saw this easement in their title report, this applicant, the owner, had a title report, and he is obligated, he's, he's charged with knowledge of what the zoning was. So he knew when he bought it, what he bought, and he want, he wants something more... And he wants something more and different than what he bought. And he's willing to evade a very simple, orderly review that would put all the questions on the table and eliminate all the confusion. He should have returned to your board in the last meeting with a site plan application so we'd all know, we'd all start at the same place. Then we could go back to the ag board. And it's clear from the law, and I gave this to the board in a letter in July to this planning board, where I went through step by step and told you all the law that had to be followed. I don't want to repeat all the code sections to you because I know everybody's eyes glaze over, but essentially what Martha Riker has told you is correct, that because this was an easement taken and created from a subdivision, it is specifically controlled by town code provisions, which say you've got to come in for any structure use for a site plan review. And it's an ordinary site plan review, and if there is a special exception use, which there is, it's combined. And the law goes even further and says that you don't give it to the zoning board of appeals first. It goes first to the planning board. So in effect, this applicant has completely reversed the required process. He stood the process on its head, and I would suggest he's doing it because this is how applicants who don't want to disclose information or want what they want operate, because the boards can't work together on an open record where they understand each other. That's what we've been dealing with for months, and in fact, for years on this application. You can't even see what structures are there. They're talking about alpaca structures. We think he's got three there. One may have been turned into a chicken coop. He had a rather glamorous playhouse for his daughter. Yes, it's sweet that he gave a playhouse to his daughter, but this is an easement that was extracted through the planning process for the benefit of the town of Southampton. And it has requirements on what kind of recreation you can use, and it's not putting a child's playhouse there. It's passive recreation of an open field. That's what's anticipated under 247 of the general municipal law. So it's not nitpicking to say, you know, you shouldn't have put that big glamorous playhouse that looks like a small version of a mansion, you know, in farmland that was preserved through a planning process. He has proposed manure storage, he's talked about 50 feet from the northerly property line. These are issues that you should deal with in site plan review first. He's in an aquifer protection overlay district. For some reason, the planner, not Anthony, who prepared the documents tonight on this hearing, didn't mention that. It's not even on the notice. It prohibits manure storage or the disposal of any kind of waste. That's an issue you should be dealing with. He's got beehives there. He's scheduled, he's shown at one time or another bathrooms there. And I want to talk just quickly, I didn't want to get too much into merits, because I think the procedural issues decide, will tell you what you have to do here. But, you know, he's talking about this greenhouse, which I think at this point is an imaginary greenhouse, because it's been evaluated by Cornell Cooperative, and who said it's completely, it doesn't even resemble anything like a greenhouse. It's got two fireplaces, it's got skylights on the top, it's got walls on the side, it's completely, you know, it is questionable what the use is. That's an issue that you can and should decide. And to show you how it can mess up the procedure here, when he goes to the zoning board, he's blocked out an area on his map that he's showing. And that, it's a 2,400 square foot footprint, right in the middle, right in the middle of the area where he can build a structure. And he's basically saying, that's a greenhouse, so you got to work around the greenhouse. So he's asking for variances for his sheds, his animal sheds. And he's basically sort of freezing this area, saying, oh, you can't touch that because that's what I'm going to do. This is another reason it's got to come to you first, so that you can look at it. You can send it to the Agricultural Advisory Board, and they can look at it and say, hey, does it work? Does it not work? Is it too big? And we've gone through this in a much earlier iteration, even before I was on the case, when he wanted worker housing here, that was, you know, outsized for the size of the lot he has, which is fairly small. And, you know, he was pushing that, and, you know, eventually, it compelled your town attorney to intervene in this case and say, you are materially breaching the easement, and you're improperly alienating preserved lands from the town of Southampton. That's what you can expect from counsel on this case, to make moves like that. It's almost unheard of for a town attorney to intervene in a zoning board case. I'm sure the planning board knows this well. Town boards like to stay away from what you do. But this has gotten so confused, and he's gone so far beyond the bounds of what a normal compliant applicant should do, that we're in a state of extreme confusion. The answer is no site plan, no review. Okay? The easement is clear on page three, the third, whereas it says you got to get site plan. The town code creates an orderly process for site plan that's been completely ignored here. And in fact, it turns it backwards. The subdivision's easement is subject to a planning board and ag advisory board review under 33051A. The site plan review is just like any other site plan review under 33050D2, which also combines the special exception use with the site plan application. They should be read together. And it's interesting when you think about it logically. He's going for variances in front of the zoning board before he's even applied for the use that the variances are for. He never applied for the use. Another reason it has to come here first, and you should be able to look at it in toto. And Martha cited the other requirements in section 183 and 184 that indicate that, you know, this is subject to normal site plan review. That's what you should be doing here. And the review, which requires variances unquestionably. You know, Mr. Bennett, even tonight, he's always regaling me with, oh, I've been practicing law for 35 years.
Why don't you stop with the ad hominem?
Excuse me?
Come on. It's all of these ad hominem. I don't want to be referred to and denigrated. I've sat here for 45 minutes. That's his entire MO. Everybody knows it. Just stick to the law. Don't denigrate me.
No more outbursts, please.
It is black letter law in our code, in section 383, I'm sorry, 330184J, that when a site plan requires a variance, it goes first to the planning board. There's no question about it. And to say, well, it's a chicken and egg thing, I had to choose and go to one board before the other board, it's in the code. You don't have to choose, you don't have to be anxious whether it's chicken or egg. It's stated in the code section. You can check it. I sent it to you in my July letter. And, you know, there's a lot more here on the merits, but the merits should be considered in an orderly way. And, you know, I wasn't on this case back in 2019, but the issue came up about moving the building envelope, and Mr. Bennett brought that up. That's because they were talking about worker housing. And at that time, I want to read you something that Mr. Bennett said. It's a quotation from the March 21, 2019 hearing. There's a note, this is a quote, "There's a note on a filed map, and if you're a real estate attorney, you know that a note on a filed map has the same force as a covenant. This was noticed and approved in 1998, and there were 30 days to challenge that determination. You can't put it over where he wants me to because it's set in stone. There's a prohibition that a planning board, that on a planning board, and if someone had a problem with it..." He had 30 days from the conditional approval in 1998. This back and forth about going to the planning board to change the map, I can't do that. That's why we had a series of planning board meetings back in 1998. That's where the planning board said agricultural structures are going to go. Patrick wants everybody to ignore it. It's set in stone and can't change. That was Mr. Bennett in 2019. So my suggestion is rather straightforward. There's a lot of confusion, a lot of unknowns here. If you follow the process, the confusion, the complexity will evaporate. This will no longer be the big controversial case where you have to listen to speeches. I welcome the application. I don't know what the result will be, but let's get it in front of your board with a full site plan where it belongs, so everybody's aware of it, has the same site plan, and then you can start rationally and in an orderly fashion, you know, coming to a conclusion about all the wants. I don't know what the outcome will be. But this last meeting that we're here for now is another strange turn in events, because all of a sudden, out of the blue, the application is now characterized as an application to amend a covenant. When I saw it, it was like, where did that come from? It didn't come from your planner, Anthony Treza. He said it was here for site plan review. So all of a sudden, it got changed. It's the wrong characterization. I think it's a mislabeling, and I think it's just another attempt to get you to move forward without knowing all the facts. It's, you know, he should come in front of you with a special permit and a site plan, and to do anything else leaves it in limbo. And the obvious, you know, I think, plan is to try to leverage some action by this board on an incomplete record back in the zoning board and go, now you should give me variances. The answer here is deny this application without prejudice. Deny an application without, deny the referral from the zoning board, which was for site plan approval. Deny it without prejudice on grounds that the applicant has repeatedly refused to give you a site plan, and direct the applicant that he can renew the application anytime as soon as he submits the required site plan. No site plan, no review. That's the outcome that you should have today. It's too early for you to be moving the chess pieces around on the board. Let's get it straightened out on the procedure. And I think it will have the added benefit, and this is not an ad hominem attack on Mr. Bennett, it's my attempt to inject order and transparency into what right now is chaos. Chaos is not planning. It's not planning, okay? And your job is going to be easier, and this case shouldn't be hanging on your agenda until you have a full site plan application that the planning department has reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Hartnagle.
Good evening. My name is Jen Hartnagle, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Group for the East End. We had previously commented before you, the planning board and the ZBA on this application. My comments may seem repetitive, but they bear repeating. We're concerned that you, as a planning board, don't have the full picture of what's happening here, and it's very clear after you listen to Mr. Bragman and Ms. Riker. What's happening on the site, what's envisioned for the site, what's already built, there's no site plan, there's no special exception permit, there's various different actions being sought from the ZBA, and the request to amend this easement is not occurring in a vacuum. And we believe that if you want to adhere to the tenants of sound planning, that you should have all the information before you and review this application as a whole. The Agriculture Advisory Board provided two pretty damning reports unanimously recommending that the building envelope remain unchanged. And I want to quote directly from one of their reports, the earlier report, quote, "It's easier to explain what this application lacked as opposed to what it proposed." Period. For these reasons and on behalf of the group, we are asking that you deny this request at this time and recommend that there be a complete set of applications made for site plan for the special exception, and that there be a greater degree of communication between the ZBA and the planning board so that you can make an informed judgment. Lastly, I just wanted to point out that there are many ag reserves within the town of Southampton, and their purpose is to facilitate farming and protect ag soil, and it would be a shame to grant exceptions in this case under these circumstances and set a poor precedent for future applications. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Jen. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the application? Any questions from the board? Oh, yes, anybody on Zoom? Wait, John.
Did he say he did?
Two people.
I couldn't hear.
Two.
I think he said two people.
Two people.
Hello, is my turn?
Yes.
Yes.
Pam, can you hear us?
We hear you.
We hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Pamela Harwood. I am the president of the Bridgehampton Civic Association, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the board of directors of the Civic as well as our members. We tell all of our prospective members and members that we will work to protect the integrity of our agricultural reserves. The decisions that are made by the planning board members following this public hearing are of the utmost importance to all residents of the town of Southampton. If you agree to this applicant's request for an amendment to change and diminish the covenant that codifies and restricts the activities and structures that are allowed on this agricultural reserve property, you will set a precedent that opens the door for this and all other owners of agricultural reserves to request that their restrictions be diminished. The integrity of all the existing and future agricultural reserve easements agreements between those property owners and the town government will be threatened. The purpose and trustworthiness of a covenant between the town of Southampton and a property owner is that covenant is not binding and can be changed simply because a person who purchased the property with this covenant in place, fully knowing the restrictions for the use of this property, is requesting it and has the money to pay for high-priced attorneys to press his case before the planning board and the zoning board of appeals for years on end. The seeming cat and mouse game regarding this property has been going on for quite a long while, and it is costing the neighbors and the town a great deal of time and money when it should be clear that the town's appointed board members can and should just say no and uphold this agricultural easement's existing provisions and the town's zoning code. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Pamela. Can we have the next Zoom, please?
Hello?
Yes, please give us your name. You're on.
Hi. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nico Elmaleh. I live at 9 Cody Way, one of the properties that abuts Mr. Shapiro's property, and I'm speaking against his desire to proceed with variances for a number of, I think, quite valid reasons. The first reason is that I think that his so-called farming operation is merely a ploy to allow him to build larger structures on his property that he will use for other purposes later on once the buildings are built. The second reason I'm against it is similar to what a previous speaker mentioned, and that is that... And that is that, uh, this exception flies in the face of the idea of preserving open space in our community. Uh, the third and sort of selfish reason, I suppose, is that I know that if he's allowed to do this, it will affect, negatively affect the value of my property, perhaps to the tune of millions of dollars. This is evidenced by the testimony of, uh, a broker who has sold numerous properties in the area. I suggest that if he really wants to be an alpaca farmer, that he buy a larger property where, as a right, he can pursue his, his desires without destroying the peace and quiet of what is, right now, a lovely, luxury residential neighborhood. And so, I, I urge you to, uh, to deny this, his request. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other people waiting in the Zoom?
I have one more people.
Did you say one more or four more?
I didn't hear.
Four.
Four. John, there are four more Zooms, yeah?
There's what? I want, I want one of those.
Hi, can I have my hearing?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm Dr. Michelle Green, and I've come before this board on more than one occasion and before the ZBA on multiple occasions. Uh, this has gone on for almost five years now. And the way I started my very first presentation at the ZBA is to remind everyone of the easement. When Claire Shea brought the request back to your planning board months ago, she was quoted as saying, "I don't have the easement, I don't have it in front of me." Um, I'm sure many of you have seen it since then, but I have it in front of me. And in fact, it's on my computer screen, saved there. And I'm going to quote a few lines from the easement. And it says that this particular easement, and this easement is very, 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 very detailed, unlike some other easements which I've seen from the town, that it's basically for the preservation, conservation, and retention of open spaces and/or areas and scenic or natural resources. That is, quote, "to preserve the natural aesthetic qualities and conditions of these open lands and scenic spaces within the town." It further goes on to say about the grandeur that the use of this agricultural residential easement will forever be restricted to the following. And it lists basically that it can't have other vehicles, other than farm vehicles, only livestock, not alpacas. Not to, number two says, "production and to prevent the degradation or loss of the aesthetic open space value of, of said premises." So, if, if you go on to read that's number two, it goes on to say, "it has to preserve the natural contours, shall remain undisturbed, and no fill or spoil shall be placed upon." No toy, no, I'm sorry, no topsoil, yada, yada, minerals shall be extracted or removed from the property. No erosion, no dumping, no slightly or offensive material should be permitted. And lastly, no temporary or permanent residential or residential structures or buildings shall be placed or erected within or upon said premises. So, basically, all that's happened since, um, Mr. Shapiro had bought the property, which was about five years after I was living there with my husband, was he's got in front of numerous boards and told different stories through his attorney, John Bennett. What's factual and was very clear, and I keep hearing that people are confused, there is no confusion in this. The only confusion is that Mr. Bennett has gone in front of multiple boards and, and told different sides and different representations of whatever story he wanted to tell to that board. What's factual is the years' worth, three years' long list of violations and continued violations on that property that, uh, that Mickey Chi came and documented. He asked me at the time when he worked there to help. He said, "The best record that you will have, Dr. Green, is to take photos." So, I have photos from when I first moved into the property, ten years ago. I have property, I have photos that have gone on to, through this summer. And when I first moved to the property, we've had other people testify that it was open, it was beautiful, and it was not, it, it was not segregated. Since he's come to the property, I've had, and I have letters that I'm submitting later, that I've had already, but I'm having my, um, uh, the, the people that work on my property submit, I had to put a wall of privates in between my property and his because of all the dumping, the debris, the porta potty, a mattress that stayed out for a year and a half. The very same dumping that's been there for two years, three years actually, has not been moved. And John Bennett told my previous attorney, um, Patrick, that, quote, "The applicant is just too busy to move it, to move dumping." I had mice, I had, I don't know if they're rats from mice, but I had varmin that were all by the back of the reserve because of the porta potty that was illegally placed. And to, to, to say that the applicant has been transparent is, nothing could be further from the truth. This has been nothing but lies since day one. The applicant's first, first initial application was to have housing for workers, he said. As Mr. Bradman came on and said, that there was no worker housing allowed on an agricultural reserve and, of this size. And that's why the town finally, the town's attorney office, had to finally come in and write a letter to the ZBA, at which point the application was, I guess, uh, they did not go further. I don't know if they withdrew it, but it, it, they never went further with the application because they knew they couldn't get away with it. Now, they've taken that same application where, you know, Mr. Bennett said earlier, and he said to, to you that, um, that, you know, my attorney said they wanted to shift the, the building envelope. Well, you know, it was a different application. And we have to remember, that was the application where they promoted and proposed agricultural housing, worker housing. When you really looked at the application and you looked at the, uh, plans from the architect, it was elaborate, elaborate, um, outside, um, I don't know what it's called, but like, like, where he said he was going to propagate plants. Meanwhile, it was an outdoor kitchen with, you know, expansive fireplaces and, and, it, it, no agricultural housing. My backyard certainly doesn't look like that, and I've never seen any agricultural housing for farmers that look like that. Now, if you look at the plans, and Nora Caitlin, who's the head of the Cornell Cooperative for Greenhouses in Suffolk County, she gave a detailed letter. This isn't a greenhouse. No one has a problem with a greenhouse. I certainly, Lisa Ball, have a problem with greenhouses. The structure is, once again, housing. It's not, I have a greenhouse on my property. I know full well what a greenhouse looks like. It's metal and glass, and it allows a certain amount of aeration so that the plants can grow. To say that this is a greenhouse in any stretch of the imagination is to call his doll, his, the dollhouse that he had up there, a doghouse. And you can call it whatever you want, it's just not a greenhouse. It's, it's housing, it's skylights, it's heat, it's several fireplaces. There is no, nothing that looks like a green, a production greenhouse. And that was what Nora Caitlin, who said she would comment at any point on this again, if you need her to come in and testify. So, here you have someone who's done repeated violations, someone who's never been truthful. Um, you, I'm told over and over again that Mr. Prado is an expert arborist. No one's questioning his capabilities as an arborist. He's certainly not an animal husbandry specialist. I spoke to many people who are alpaca specialists. And in fact, Mr. Prado was told, called one of them, begging them to come shear the alpacas because they didn't anticipate needing that. And they had a very hard time getting some, someone to the property because the alpacas will get definitely ill if they're not done on time. But I don't want to, I don't want to stray from the, the, the real meaning of this application. Why, my, Mr. Shapiro said that this is so important, that the greenhouse is fundamental to his plan, is because this is all he ever wanted. He's only wanted housing. He's wanted housing not for farmers, he's wanted extended housing for his property, for, to, to make his property, uh, more lucrative and had extra housing. Because everyone knows that the more house you have, the larger the house, the more you build it up, the more your value of your property. He's a businessman, he is not a farmer. Lastly, um, you know, they talk about, you know, that he has manure on the property, that the alpacas make manure. Well, this is an aqua pure district. No one's talking about where he's putting the manure. Has anyone ever addressed it? This is, these are the, these are the issues that go when you make a site plan. I mean, these, it's just absurd. And I know you, as a planning board, know that much better than I do. He says that the children, to have his children be interested in the farm, he has alpacas. I don't know about you, but I have children who are interested in farms and interested in zoos. And I don't have illegal structures, I don't have illegal animals, I don't have animals getting loose onto Butter Lane. I've seen the children screw, I've seen his, I, I believe it's a 14-year-old, around that age son, driving, wielding a motorized vehicle with four teenage boys, blowing through the dirt, screaming while the alpacas are scared. Um, Ms. Meredith Berkowitz has given a video of that already. Um, that's what goes on at the reserve. Uh, to say that he's made four coats or sweaters or whatever out of, uh, four alpacas, I've already given testimony. And I, and I gave it to the planning board, it's in writing, um, that's about $80 worth of, uh, alpaca fur, for the four alpacas. Now, this is a guy who was, uh, you know, a self-proclaimed, you know, multimillion dollar hedge fund. I'm sure the purpose is not to make $80 worth of sweaters or have his children interested. Um, it, he runs a hedge fund and the sole purpose is obviously to make money. He's a businessman. And you and I, and everyone on the board knows that if you have a chaos on the reserve, your property that was worth $11 million is now worth $20 million. And my property, which I've already given testimony, and, um, my broker's going to speak about this, and I've already had an appraiser that we've given you, is worth at least $1 million less because of what he planned to do. Furthermore, um, John Bennett says he spoke to, um, Altus about this. He's never had a conversation that I know of, because I've spoken to Altus numerous times. And Altus, and Martha can speak to this today, Altus gave a deposition that Eve Combermally, the owner, the previous owner of my house, was supposed to buy the agricultural reserve. At the last minute, they changed their mind. So, at the last minute, he drew in the box, the building envelope there as an afterthought. That's all it was, an afterthought. But he said, and in his testimony, he said, because he thought it was going to be a small shed or some small structure. They never envisioned housing, they never envisioned animals, animals, animal husbandry is not allowed in the reserve. Shapiro knew this when he bought the property, Bennett knew this, everyone knows this. And to, and I gave back, when we spoke back in July 5th, I gave to Ms. LaFarrow and the rest of town board, I, uh, planning board, rather, I gave them the, the, the long list, this, the summary, which I had transcribed of the meeting where in 2011, town code was changed in terms of animal husbandry. It was on July 6th, 26th, rather, 2011, the town code was amended for animal husbandry in CR District from five acres to 10 acres to be uni, to be uniform and, quote, consistent. The town code, section 330 dash 798, in a CR District, states that animal husbandry shall only be permitted on sites of 10 acres or more. And that all shelters provided for livestock, fowl, or fur and wool-bearing animals shall be at least 150 feet from any street line and 200 feet from any property line. Shapiro purchases property well after the town code was amended and was, and knew these provisions of the purchase. He's now trying to change and confuse the boards by going and pleading one thing in front of the ZBA and one thing in front of the planning board. And I've watched this unfold for five years. It's not confusing. It's very obvious what's going on. There's no transparency because it's being purposely made confused. And on a personal note, I can tell you that I felt, I have felt personally bullied, um, living in this property. In, during COVID, when, uh, Shapiro was trying to build all of these illegal structures, Mickey Chi was very involved in, in code enforcement. He gave me his cell number. He said, "I'm here, Michelle, I'm here every single day trying to stop him, I see what he's doing. I'm here every day, just take pictures and call me when he comes. Call me when you see illegal activity, and I will come and try to stop it." Instead, I get a text from Mr. Shapiro, which I'll provide evidence, threatening me that I have stopped, that I, as if I have the power to stop his illegal structures. No, the building department issued him a stop permit because of the illegal building. Mickey Chi issued him numerous code violations. The town has taken action. I wish I could take action. All I do is plead with the board to help me and help the other neighbors. I know you've seen the, we, we've had over 40 neighbors sign a petition to stop this already. It's five years, five years. Five years of having to finally block Mr. Shapiro from being able to text me because I've gotten threatening texts from him. I'll supply those as well. I really, I beg you, I beseech the board to do the right thing. The optics are not good. The optics have to be that there's a certain procedure that has to be done and followed. As a knowledgeable attorney, I'm sure Mr. Bennett knows what those are. As a fixer for the town, I'm sure there's a different route that they're trying to go. So, finally, I beg you to do the right thing.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Green. No, I-
You described as a liar?
I, you can, you can speak after we hear. This is a public hearing, and the public has a right to speak, so just please. Thank you, Dr. Green.
Can we ask the public to refrain from personal attacks that we can't substantiate here and just stick to the application?
Yeah, it, uh- Can we, how, how many more Zooms do we have?
Can you see and hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can see and hear you, and, uh- Good, I just ask that if you, um, are going to duplicate a lot of what some of the other people, so just if you can be brief, it's-
I, I will, but I have, I have some important information that I would like to ask.
Okay, great.
I have been personally, um, in some ways, attacked or statements and accused of making statements previously that are false by Mr. Bennett.
Can you give us your name, please?
Yes, I'm going to start with that. My name is Meredith Berkowitz, and I own one of the neighboring properties. Um, Jeff Bradman is representing me, and he's already, he's already gone through the legal issues and not here to talk about those. Uh, my neighbor's Kevin, my neighbor Kevin Cox, who has already appeared previously, is not able to be here tonight, but he did authorize me to also speak for him and to share with you that he's united with us in opposition to this application. Mr. Bennett talked a lot at the beginning of his presentation about the statements of Tim Cully, who was my attorney at the time that Mr. Shapiro was seeking the six, the 3,000 square foot of housing and another 3,000 square foot greenhouse and hardscape that covered over four acres of the reserve. And Patrick Feith, who represented Michelle Green back in 2019 before the ZBA. He says that we asked the, that we asked him if they would move the envelope and that it was our suggestion. And that is factually correct. What he doesn't tell you is that he didn't then go to the ZBA and say, "Oh, we'll go to the planning board." That's not why he came to you and asked for it, it's not because we suggested. In fact, Jeff Bradman read you the statements that he made at the time. "I can't do what Patrick is asking me. If someone wanted to challenge that, they should have done it in 1998." So, Mr. Bennett tries to make you think he's a good guy and he's here doing what you, what we ask, he's not. We're not opposed, and he's also mixing up, we're not opposed to the movements of the envelope. As I said, we suggested it way back then. But I'm not land use expert. To me, it does seem that there are a lot of benefits to moving it, that certainly the topography is flatter in the middle of the reserve. Their drainage goes from west to east on that reserve, so it'd be, and it's very hilly at the very west end. So, I think there could be very good reasons for moving it. That's not what I'm opposed to. What I'm opposed to is how Mr. Shapiro and Mr. Bennett have turned this process on its head. I, I support agriculture. I'm very friendly with the tree farmer that's on our street, I'm very friendly with Oma. I support agriculture. But what I don't support is- But what I don't support is a applicant and his attorney who continue to throw the system into chaos, as Mr. Bradman said, who don't follow the rules. Um, non-arborists like Mr. Prado, but what I can tell you is that it was, by their own admission, they intensified the tree farm. When I bought my property back in 2014, this was a beautiful tree farm. It had not fallen into disrepair. It was pristine. The trees were very well spaced apart. I watched in horror as Mr. Shapiro bought this property, someone who loves landscaping, gardening, and agriculture. I watched him intensify planting tree on top of tree, on top of tree. Everyone who's even a amateur landscape, uh, landscaper knows that trees need room to breathe and they need tree, they need room to grow. I was alarmed. He fight, he planted red cedars right next to his pear and apple trees. He talks about blight on those trees. Well, the blight was probably caused by the red cedars. He planted those fruit trees right on top of us. And he endangered, when he did that, apples and fruit trees within four miles of the reserve, not just his own, but others. He said specifically in this hearing tonight, that what he did was remove all the invasive vegetation, such a good guy, removed all the invasive vegetation that was, uh, permeating all the borders of the reserve. I can tell you, that's just an outright laugh. He took out the, that, the buffer vegetation, all of it, from along my side. And to do so, he actually trespass, his workers trespass onto my property and cut them down from, partly from my side, but, you know, we won't talk about that. But I will say that what he did is, he left the invasive vines. And I have photographic evidence of this. I can, I'm going to send it to you while we're meeting. He did not remove the invasive vegetation. He removed the buffer vegetation in March, following the last planning board meeting and ag advisory board meeting, and in my opinion, he did that in retaliation. And it's made a lot of what he's been doing is retaliation. In that same hearing in March 2019, Mr. Bennett, like he said so many times, has said that people, he's, this is a story, he tried to paint it of neighbors buying next to open space and then expecting it to remain open space, but then they don't want the agricultural activities permitted by the code. Well, husbandry is not permitted by the code on this parcel. It's undersized. And Mr. Bennett said, if someone didn't understand that, then I'm sorry, but that doesn't take away the rights from my client, and if that was the case, they should not have bought the parcel. Those are Mr. Bennett's words. And wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Bennett. His client is a sophisticated real estate financier. He runs a billion-dollar hedge fund. He made a $12 million investment in this property. Surely, he did some diligence. If he had, he would have been aware that the code prohibited the very activities he's seeking, husbandry. It's a SE use and he could not comply with the conditions imposed by the code, having a minimum of 10 acres and 200-foot setbacks. He knew this when he bought the parcel and he bought it anyway. If his vision included husbandry and a polycultural approach, well, then as Mr. Bennett said about us in 2019, uh, he should have bought a different parcel. One that was 10 acres and one that had an envelope that could accommodate the 200-foot setbacks, his vision and his polycultural approach. This reserve, as others have told you, is not just a regular reserve. This was created as an open space agricultural reserve, created to preserve the parcel as open space as contemplated by the 1970 master plan and the 1999 comprehensive plan. So in this case, neighbors who bought next to this open space reserve, thinking it would be preserved as open space, that's entirely reasonable. On the other hand, his client, who purchased the parcel not understanding what that meant, what it meant to preserve it as open space, he made the error and he is now unhappy with his purchase that those open space restrictions do not allow him to do everything that he wants to do. We should not be aggrieved and the enjoyment of our own properties diminished or their values diminished because he's unhappy with the purchase or made an mistake with his purchase.
Okay. So, appreciate your remarks, yes? Are you, can you wrap up?
Well, I am definitely one part I also really want to say that I need to get across. Everyone else has really had a chance and I would like to just say it. The other thing even more bravely that concerns me is that I submitted a FOIL request in response to, um, when the comments were due after the last public hearing. I received over 62 pages of disclosure. I did not get the letter from Mr. Bennett that was, um, requesting that he reopen the agriculture board discussion. I only found out about this later when I submitted a similar request in July, covering exact same dates and covering the same substance. Then that document was produced, but by the time it was produced, the opportunity to speak and express, uh, concerns to the ag advisory board and to contradict a ton of misrepresentation, untruths, and half truths that were contained in both Mr. Shapiro's and Mr. Prado's affidavits have lapsed. We were not able to tell the airport to give them all of the information, and I don't know if they would have reached the same decision had they heard from some of us. We don't know that. But that suppression, the act of omission of suppressing that, I was told by the FOIL firm, was made by the town planner who was assigned to the matter. And if that's the case, that is very concerning, excuse me, that is very concerning. Because when someone deliberately or negligently engages in omission like that, it calls into question the integrity and fairness of the entire process. And it, it gives the appearance of bias and preference towards the applicant, and that is very concerning. And I'm going to be submitting a more formal complaint following this hearing to you, the planning board, as well as to, uh, as well as to the HR department, because I think this needs to be investigated and, and reviewed as to why that document, which turned out not only to be, uh, within and responsive to the FOIL request, since it was produced the second time, but not the first time, but why it turned out to be pivotal in terms of the direction that this application was taken. And to have omitted that piece of information, that is very, very concerning. It is my firm belief that impartiality and transparency are the cornerstones of good governance, and I think it is essential that everyone, including the town planner assigned, needs to follow these principles and follow the codified process to maintain public trust.
Indeed. Thank you, thank you. So, the FOIL requests.
Is someone else on?
Is there one more piece, one more person?
Yeah, one more.
Is your microphone on?
There you go. Yeah.
Okay, we got this.
I'm here. I've talked before this court before, uh, and I'm talking on behalf of Dr. Green at, uh, 6:39 Butter Lane. You know, I'm a real estate broker, a broker, and I've been a broker out here for almost 30 years.
Can you give us your name, please?
We need your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Garrett Perza. My apologies.
Garrett?
Garrett Perza, I'm with the Court Member.
Garrett DePursha.
And I, uh, sell properties from South Athens to Montauk and Sec, on Michelle Brown. So I'm very familiar with the whole area. And one of the most desirable properties, uh, for people to buy is on a reserve for the very obvious reasons that it gives them that, uh, sense of open space and all that quiet and peacefulness behind them. However, everyone who buys on the reserve is not equal. And I'm going to give you a quick case in point. There was a, a subdivision on one street built by Farrell Building Company, Farrell Court off of Deerfield Road, and Ford is right side farm just to the north. And some of the houses look out at open reserves and some of them are right behind some of the, uh, the barns and the horse structures. And in case in point, uh, there's a very nice house at three, uh, Farrell Court that sold not too long ago for $7,000. And it's right behind the barn and really it was a nice house. I, on the other hand, had a listing at nine Farrell Court with nothing behind it, and it was not as nice a house as, uh, number three, but because it had much more open space, it actually, uh, closed at $7,850,000. And the point I'm making is that when you buy on the reserve, you do the due diligence. You hire an attorney, a Mr. Bennett, uh, or Mr. Bradman, or someone else, to ascertain what can belong behind that, uh, on that reserve right behind you. And you make your purchase decisions because of that. And it really adversely affects the value of that property when something changes. And, um, that's what I'm speaking to tonight. Uh, and not everything is about money, but things are about what you expect when you buy a property. And if that changes over the course of time, what that does to the value of your property. In the, uh, respect to, uh, Dr. Green's property, that could be well over a million dollars, uh, which is a significant amount of money. I don't care who you are, that's a significant amount of money. Thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Bennett, do you want to say some closing remarks? Yes?
I'll be very brief and I'll, I'll just, I'll have some, I mean, I'll have some-
Okay.
My adversaries are simply incorrect in terms of how these things have been done and how they always have been done. Uh, if, I don't think there's animal husbandry involved here, so I don't think there's any need for a special exception, but if there are permits, uh, that are required, we will, uh, and site plan that is required, we will do that. It is the cart before the horse, and I will give counsel examples in the past where this board has done what I'm asking it to do here, which is to change the location where agricultural structures can be located prior to any site plan application. What they're trying to suggest is that I'm trying to do away with site plan application if it's necessary. They know I'm not doing that. I'm here for a totally different, separate application, which is to change the location of agricultural structures. And under the code, my application for site plan approval would be void without either a variance or this board changing the location of the structures. And I will provide counsel, I'll provide my adversaries with, uh, instances in the past where this board has changed the location of agricultural structures on the map prior to site plan approval, because it only makes sense that way. I can't, first of all, I can't, I, I, my application would, would be, would be void without that, number one. Number two, I don't know what this whole thing about, this is always supposed to be forever open is about. I'll read to you from the, um, May 16th, 1996 ag reserve that's, that's, uh, that this, that this, uh, property is subject to. "Nothing herein shall be construed as precluding the grantor from erecting or constructing agricultural or recreational accessory structures or buildings." So this was, like any ag reserve, this always, the ag reserve documents always allow agricultural structures. This is indeed what happens and everybody knows it. People come out, they buy a piece of property next to an agricultural reserve and then, oh, really? Agriculture is happening there? Which is why people, this board has insisted on notice covenants and all the like. So it, it, all this stuff about people reading the documents before they bought, if they had read the agricultural easement, they would have realized that structures are allowed. What we're suggesting is a more common sense place for these structures. There's no question about it. And I'll read to you from Mr. McCully's letter. And I don't care whether or not it was, uh, ag farming or a location for housing for animals, so to speak, or, you know, it, it, he says, in addition, this is Mr. McCully's, Ms. Green's prior lawyer, 20, 2019. "There is an avenue for the applicant to pursue which would most likely would or, or could reduce or even eliminate the need for the variance. The applicant can make an application to the planning board for relief from the building envelope imposed by it when it approved the subdivision." So if you would please take all this ad hominem attempt to divert what is going on here, the application before you is very, very, very simple. You're not an enforcement board, you're not supposed to be talking about that. This fine gentleman's character has been impugned, and I think he's been very, very, very quiet while it's happened until it got just overwhelming. What is before you is whether or not you think it's a good idea to change the area where certain agricultural structures are allowed. That's the beginning and the end. You're not supposed to inquire whether or not that makes it likely that someone is going to break the law because you can't do that. You're not supposed to require a site plan application, which I couldn't meet the requirements for it without changing this, and I will provide counsel with applications where I have represented people in the past, where this board has changed the area that, where agricultural structures can belong prior to any subdivision application, aware of the fact that it is indeed a chicken and the egg thing. So that, that, that's pretty much what I have to say. I'll respond to all these other, uh, comments from counsel, um, in, in, in writing. You see what's happening here. Oh, you have to do this before you do that, you have to do this, but yes, if I'm making an application for a permit, but I'm not there yet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Adam, would you?
Did, Mr. Shapiro, do you want to say something? Yeah. And then, and then we're going to conclude.
Okay, so, look, I was just called a liar and accused of intimidation. The, look, this is a sphere I'm not familiar with, I've never, in my life, experienced being called a liar, called an intimidator. And, you know, we're in a twilight zone where people can say anything they want, whether they are patently false or not. I'm only going to read from my sworn affidavit, and I would love for some of these statements to be submitted under some sort of oath or, or signature swearing to their validity, because there's a tremendous amount that's not true and easily provably not true, which is in my affidavit. And so, uh, before I get into that, though, I do want to say about Brendan Prado, he unfortunately had a death in the family today and cannot join the Zoom. Uh, but again, he did provide an affidavit, and I'd just like to read from his affidavit about, you know, what we are doing on the property, if you don't mind.
And you could submit that to us? You could submit those documents?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, it is submitted. The entire affidavit is submitted. Um, I'd be, I wrote all over this one, but we can submit it again. Uh, but I have a sworn affidavit that, uh, includes my statement and then it includes Brendan's, and let me just get to Brendan's first. Apologize, the pages have gotten a little mixed up. Uh, this is, this is mine, I need to find Brendan's. Okay. So this is Brendan's, the end of Brendan's statement. I, I'll refer to some other things he said, but he says clearly, "The way we are utilizing the property is on the highest level of sustainable agriculture. We are performing regenerative agriculture, reducing our inputs from the outside of this farm and trying to contain everything that we use and need here on the farm." There's, there's no doubt, although of course I would be happy to have him follow up. Um, he's, he said, "All work we have been doing has been to restore the land. That is the sole purpose of my job and why I'm here." And he refers to the statement that "we degraded the land," um, which is not true. There, there. So, Michelle Green can just say things like, "There was a mattress on the property," which is just not true. She can say that I cut down olive trees that I shouldn't have cut down. Apparently Meredith Berkowitz can say that as well. They can say that we planted red cedar trees, which is not true. Um, so there are just so many things like this, and I will go through some that are just so easily provable, but just, uh, lawyer Bregman over there on the prior, um, hearing also, although he said I had red maples. Uh, we, we have neither red maples nor did we plant any red cedars. Uh, we have three, three red cedars on our border that we chose to preserve because they're native plants and because we can monitor them for blight. And they're not producing blight, and they're not the reason that we've had blight on our apples and our pear trees. That was a reasoned decision that we made with Brendan Prado, who is an expert on this. So, uh, the opposition just throws things around and says, "I planted red maple," says, "I planted red cedars." I did not do any of these things. We chose to preserve several, a very small number of red cedars because we could monitor them, and they were on the border, and we were looking to restore the border to native vegetation. So that's just patently false. But where it really gets nefarious, and this is, again, now I'm reading from the affidavit. "In her testimony before the planning board, Green stated, 'As soon as Mr. Shapiro bought the property, he called me to say that he had big plans. I didn't know better. I was very trusting. I gave him the code to my gate. He came in, he actually knocked down all the trees, the olive trees, that separated my property from the back fence of his land where the reserve is, because he then, a week or two later, was going to start to build. He put hay down, ready to build, no planning, no approvals by anyone, like a thief in the night.'" Okay. The olive trees that were cut down are invasive Russian olive trees that are earmarked by the USDA. Whenever they're there, you are supposed to eradicate them. We eradicated them. But these invasive Russian olive trees have been- But these invasive Russian olive trees have become beautiful olive trees in the telling of the story. Now let's go to what Dr. Green actually texted to me. So these are her real texts. "Dear Adam, I hope you're having a great day. At the end of the summer, Mike Gardner plans to cut back much of the olive trees and junk on our side. Would it be okay to cut back those on your side? I wouldn't do anything you wouldn't want to touch. Please let me know. Best, Michelle." I, I told her that I was very open to that. In fact, I was open to it enough that I would find the vendor to do it and I would pay for it. Once she knew that, she said, "Happy Tuesday. Quick question, do you know when they will cut down the junk by the back of the fence?" I said, "Brendan is getting one last quote, which is expected tomorrow. Then we'll pick one, one vendor and set a date. I would guess some in the next few weeks. Will that work?" Yes, I just, I want to, let's cut off. Last, so last text, me to her. "I have a quota of $4,500 to do both sides. If it's okay with you, I'll tell them to go ahead and I will pay for it." She wrote back, "That is awesome. I really appreciate it. Next summer, you should come by and say hello. We almost never go out during the year." That's the exchange about the Russian olives. Now she accuses me of cutting things down that were clearly meant to be cut down and with her permission. If she's, she's accusing me of intimidating her. Now she has done outrageous intimidation of Brendan and of other people. And again, this is all in the, this is sworn by me in an affidavit.
Mr. Shapiro?
Yes.
Just take a few minutes to wrap it up. You know, we're not a court of law and we certainly hear you. And if you can resubmit a clean copy of that affidavit to us, that would be helpful.
Okay. Okay. Then I'm, I'm happy to wrap it up. I just want you to know that when it comes to intimidation, she told Becca Sturgis of Reed Hildebrand, "I know where you live." She called the director of research at the Yale Botanical Garden and pretended to be a friend of mine and asked for information on my project. She confronted Brendan with expletives, which is sworn in his affidavit. So this idea, I mean, I guess I would just ask you to credit only information that's been submitted under oath, please.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're a land use board and we have, we're going to be considering a covenant amendment and request to amend the location of the envelope for agricultural structures. That's it. You know, when, when matters of character and accusations fly, I get very uncomfortable. I didn't like it. So just, we will review your application without prejudice.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I'll have a motion to, I'm sorry, we really have to wrap up. We've been here for hours, all day. We have-
One minute.
She'll go on forever.
No, I'm sorry.
It's also relevant, David, that she-
Okay, please. Please, Mr. Shapiro.
The written record will be left open, though. The written record will be left open.
We're gonna, we're gonna-
Now that he's accused me-
Close.
Send me out there.
Martha, you can submit something in writing. The record's going to remain open for anybody who wants to submit anything in writing.
We are going to close the hearing with a 30-day written comment period. I'll have a motion. Motion by Dennis, second by Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, two absent. Motion to adjourn by Dennis, second by Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, two absent. Anthony, do you want this signed and signed?
Oh, my God. Those are amazing.